Welcome to you all. Good evening. Welcome to the joint work session of the School Board and the Falls Church City Council for Monday, July 20th. Delighted to have our friends from the School Board here with us this evening. We are here to discuss the RFP. And I don't know if there's any comments to be made, other than maybe turn it over to you. Why, is there anything you'd like to say, Justin?
Uh, no.
Okay. Well, why don't we turn it over to you, Mr. Shields?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council, members of the School Board.
If I could just interrupt you one second. This is, I think, our first meeting back from our colleague, Mr. Baruch. And I just wanted to welcome back on behalf of City Council, and just let them know we're delighted to have him back, and let everything turn out okay, so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. Well, tonight is a work session on the draft request for conceptual proposals to build a new or remodeled George Mason High School and expanded Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School and the associated commercial development on the school campus. And I think tonight is intended to be a work session in the real sense that the intent is to go through this document, try to update everybody on the changes that have been made in response to comments that we've received so far. Those are essentially staff work, working with outside legal counsel to produce the draft that we'll go through tonight. And so what we'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Wall with Trotman Sanders, who will give us a high-level summary of all the changes that have been made. The intent, in terms of the way we have envisioned this meeting, is that after that briefing on the changes in the document, that the council and the School Board could go into closed session to have the benefit of receiving legal advice on other aspects of the RFP, or changes to the RFP. But we'll get to that point after the briefing, and then, you know, possibly some discussion prior to the motions of going into closed session, just on that point. But that was the way we envisioned we would proceed.
Okay, great. Thank, yes.
I'm sorry, just one logistical thing. I wanted to note for you all that Mr. Sharp is on via speakerphone. And so if he needs to speak, he'll have to give us an audible signal. And so that it's recorded, I just need a second to put the microphone down to the speaker. Thank you.
That sounds great.
Okay. And in that vein, Mr. Sharp did notify me that he was unable to attend the meeting due to a personal matter. A personal matter, he has a new grandson. And it was an out-of-town trip that he scheduled prior to this meeting. And in accordance with School Board Policy 2.23, Mr. Sharp requested permission to participate electronically. He is in North Carolina and is participating via telephone. Our policies require that we have a vote of the School Board to approve that participation, so would I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with School Board Policy 2.23, and being that a quorum of the board is physically assembled, I move that the School Board permit Mr. Sharp's participation in the meeting through electronic communication means from a remote location that is not open to the public.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, and welcome, Mr. Sharp. Just one other note. My understanding is we will be hearing a public presentation summarizing these changes, but that at this point, we have been advised that there should not be questions following the presentation. Is that understanding correct? Or how do we plan to proceed on that, given the possibility of a closed session to follow?
Yes. I have recommended that I walk through the summary of the changes with the document posted, the comparison document, to the draft we looked at last time. And then have matters that we've identified as legal issues that would be appropriate for closed session to be conducted in that forum, and then have a subsequent opportunity, if appropriate, for another open session.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wall. Is there any object on that? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that I'm, I'm sorry. Did I want to?
No, go ahead. Mr. Duncan, I'll jump in.
I don't know enough to know whether I object or not, but it's not sort of the way that I had imagined that we would do it. But somebody else have any thoughts?
I share Mr. Duncan's sentiment on that. I mean, my view is that, you know, this is supposed to be a transparent public process, so I'm happy to at least have my comments that are about the RFP generally be discussed publicly. That would be my preference. And then if they're legal issues specifically. And I have a couple of legal issues which are towards the end of the document that I'm happy to do in closed session. My general overall impressions are things that I think are missing, or process issues with timing, I think, are appropriate for a public meeting and public discussion. So that's where I'd like to at least have those, unless there's clear reasons not to.
So why don't we hear from council? Here's presentation, here's reasons, and what kind of discussion is appropriate for a closed session, and then decide how we'll proceed. But I think that was the starting point, that there are some matters that should be discussed privately to preserve attorney-client privilege and other legal matters. But why don't you go ahead with the presentation you'd plan to give, and the caveats, and the advice you'd like that you can give us publicly?
Okay.
And then we can figure out how we're going to proceed from there.
Sure. Happy to. And how you described it is how I envisioned this proceeding. So with that, we'll jump right in. And I'm gonna not go over every detail. There's a number of, you know, smaller changes. This is intended to be a summary of the more substantive matters that have been addressed in the RFP. So, starting with the description of the scope of work, and this is in Section 2.3. As it relates to the high school, we have clarified that the new high school will be a design-build either by one of two methods. One, demolishing the entire school and constructing a new school in its place. Or, as an alternative, renovating all or part the school. So that is presented as an either-or. Secondly, as it relates to the high school and the swimming pool in particular, we have clarified that inclusion of the swimming pool be presented as a separate concept that may or may not be included in the final project. The second deals with availability of the facilities for occupancy, both the high school and the middle school. We have changed that date, pushed it back one year to July 1st, 2019. And that appears in Section 2.3, both A and B. The next change is in commercial redevelopment. These are all in Section 2. C. First, we have re-characterized the use of that property as commercial or mixed uses to maximize three individual items. The first is the financial value of the property. The second is the tax yield and other benefits, other financial benefits, to the School Board and the city. And thirdly, enhancements to the property and the surrounding community. Second, under commercial redevelopment, is to clarify preferences for four different things. The first is exemplary design. The second is an appropriate ratio of commercial uses relative to residential uses. The third is clarification that the high-quality effective transportation improvements are applicable to all modes of travel, not just vehicular, but including pedestrian. And then lastly, environmental responsible and sustainable design, which was language that was already there. And then the third thing, under commercial redevelopment, again, in 2C, is to simplify the expression of the preference for retaining fee simple ownership. The next major item is the schedule. We have changed the issue date of the RFP to July 30th. As a result of that change, we have pushed out the periods for the end of the question period and responses to the questions by about one week. So those dates are in the schedule as modified. The fifth item is a clarification, or a further clarification, of the separation between the PPEA procurement and the bond referendum. There is language that is preceding the schedule in Section 3.2. And then there is a new footnote number two that further describes the relationship The sixth item is the contents of the proposals, what actually will be included, what we're asking for. These are in Section 4.5B. Under qualifications and experience, we are specifying that we are looking for information on experience with commercial and/or mixed-use development of comparable size and complexity. We had made that clearer with respect to school facilities, and now we have made that equally clear as it relates to the commercial or mixed-use development. Under project characteristics, this is something that does not appear in the red line. It is something that we have talked with staff about since that red line was issued. At the end of Section 4.6, we are planning to add an item at the end, item K, that would read as follows. Identify and describe any involvement in project development on the part of any owners or tenants of adjacent properties. So let me reread that, because I know you don't have it in front of you. Identify and describe any involvement in project development on the part of any owners or tenants of adjacent properties. The next section, 4.7B, dealing with plan of finance. We have elaborated on the information to be included in relation to the financial schedule, the financing schedule. We are also asking for anticipated timeframes to realize the value of the redevelopment. And we are also asking additionally for other, any other proposed financial benefits, and we use Proffers as an example of that. Dropping down to Section 4.8, dealing with project benefit and compatibility, we have consolidated and tightened up the language a bit to focus on three major things. The first being economic impact. The second, community information and involvement strategies. And the third, anticipated benefits that are unique to a particular proposer. The seventh is in Section 5.0, dealing with evaluation criteria. We've done several things here. The first is generally a better match with the requested information, particularly with regard to project characteristics, project financing, and the project benefits and compatibility. And I'll speak to those a bit more. As it relates to project financing, we have added a reference to strategies for managing risk that protect the board and the city from exposure to undue financial risks, along with the reasonableness and the anticipated effectiveness of those strategies. And that is in 5.4C. We have clarified that we're not only looking for whether certain elements are included, but also to what extent certain concepts and elements are included and achieve the goals of the project. So you will see the insert of "to what extent" in a number of those items. And that is the highlights of the substantive changes that we've made.
Thank you. I guess along the lines of maybe what you discussed earlier, the idea that some of this discussion is most appropriate for a closed session, because it would involve you giving us guidance, legal guidance, and the like, but counterbalance with the idea that this is a public process. Might I suggest that instead of really directing questions at council, if there are people who want to make comments, that wouldn't necessarily have you responding with legal advice or legal opinions, then maybe that might be a sort of a compromise we could do. I don't know if that sounds reasonable to you, Mr. Castillo?
Well, I think, excuse me. I think I would look to Mr. Wall to guide us. My, I think the soundest way to approach this would be to address the issues that we need to address in closed session, at which time we could identify everything else. I think the risk we run from this approach that you just suggested, Mr. Mayor, is that there may be something where somebody makes a comment, and Mr. Wall says, "Well, let's talk about it in closed session."
If I could, that's how I was envisioning this playing out, just for purposes of making clear to both the council and the board what issues we had identified as being legal advice to both bodies, making sure everybody is understanding of that. And then other questions unrelated to that would be then appropriate for a public session.
Does that work?
So you're suggesting we go into closed session shortly, and then come out of closed session after being given some guidelines and answering some questions that are legal of nature?
That's my recommendation, yes.
Okay. Is there any comment from people on council?
Yeah, I don't want to complicate this, but there may be a need to go back into closed session after a public discussion, because we may need to take further discussion into that, that flows out of that, that's ripe for public discussion, but then we need legal advice on. So I just think we need to be flexible. I tend to see it that, you know, going public is better first, but I'm happy to go the other way. But there may be a need after a public discussion to then go into closed session again.
Other comments, at least on council?
Well, I guess, you know, where I'm coming from is that the language of the document, of course, is very important. The process by which we arrive at that language is also important, because it will help build support for the final outcome that the document process yields. And I guess I agree with Mr. Baruch that, you know, we can come in and out of closed session all we want, I suppose. It's a little inconvenient for the folks who are here listening. My experience in going into closed session is that we have a pretty narrow scope of discussion. And if we ever, you know, nudge off that, we throw a red flag up and say, "Well, we can't talk about that in closed session." So, I mean, do we envision, it's pretty well-known what the broad outlines of discussion are going to be. Do we envision that we're going to go through those in closed session, and then come out of closed session and tell folks what it is that we can out of that?
Well, I think what, I think when Mr. Wall, I won't speak for Mr. Wall, but there are the things we need to deal with in closed session. There's everything else. I don't anticipate that we'll deal with anything other than what we need to deal with in closed session. If we need to go back into closed session, so be it. But I think this is council's recommendation. I don't think this is going to be an overly elaborate discussion, but I do think there are sound policy and legal reasons why we should deal with that which we have to deal with in closed session, at which time we can deal with everything in open session subsequently.
Yeah. I tend to be where Mr. Duncan is. I'd rather keep as much of this public. And I also don't want to have myself or other council members, or even School Board members, get sort of hamstrung, because things are said in closed session that are really ripe for public session, but because council was there for closed session, then we're debating ad nauseam about whether it's appropriate to have that discussion that a member may feel should be out in the public, sort of confined because it was in the closed session, and then we're debating that issue. So there is the risk of that, and I, for one, opt for transparency. And I think that's where Mr. Duncan's coming from in this process, so.
I just don't know. What is the charge of the closed session? I mean, right, we have to read language that says. Is it going to be general enough that it basically could cover anything else that we want to talk about?
I think we have, the point is to operate within the law, and to discuss that which we have to discuss in closed session, at which time everything else will be in the open. So this is not, I'm not anticipating that we'll be here for five hours in closed session. But, you know, the problem with talking in open session about things that you should be talking about in closed session is you can't unring the bell, put the toothpaste back in the tube, say it however you will. And I think it's important for the soundness of this process over the long term, that we do things in an orderly fashion, dispose of the closed session issues pursuant to council's recommendations. And then, you know, let's get into the open session issues all you want.
And if I may, I do not anticipate a lengthy list of issues to be addressed. There are certain ones that we have identified that I consider to be legal advice, that a closed session discussion is appropriate. But I do not expect it to be a long list. I do not have a long list, and I don't expect issues that would come up to be all that lengthy either.
Is it possible identifying what those issues are without telling us what you're going to tell us about them?
I can tell you one issue I'm comfortable talking about, and that is, last time I was here, we talked a bit about what information was going to be publicly available of the proposals, and what information would be exempt under the Freedom of Information Act. And some further discussion on that is one of those issues.
That's helpful. That's one thing on my list. So we're making progress, if I may. The other thing on my list was actually referred to in your red line comments, I think, where you read the language about identify and describe any owners of adjacent properties. I had asked that we be more specific in stipulating that, you know, we want the private sector to go out to the adjacent properties, UVA, Virginia Tech, Womata, Fairfax County, and engage them to the degree the private sector feels like they should be engaged. Is that, is that another subject that we could talk about in closed session, or is that an open session example?
I think the issue, as you presented it, would be appropriate for open session. There may be aspects of that that I would think would be considered legal advice that would be more appropriate for closed session.
Okay. So it sounds like it could be closed, so no point in starting open, I suppose, if we have to close it in the middle of the discussion. And the third point-
Mr. Duncan, could we, I am concerned that this line of questioning could collide with the policy reasons underlying why you go into closed session. So might I suggest that we go into closed session, Mr. Wall can present the issues that he thinks are subject to discussion in closed session, at which point we can have a discussion of whether or not that's appropriate, and then decide to proceed. But again, you know, once this is out, the value and policy underpinnings of going into closed session, which is something that you should not do lightly, will be undermined. So I would suggest that we hear Mr. Wall out, hear what he wants to talk about in closed session, at which time then we can decide whether or not that's appropriate to proceed. And if it's not, then we'll go back into open, or we'll deal with the rest of the list. But this is going to run off the rails, I think, if we don't do things in an orderly fashion. Mr. Wall, I don't, if you disagree, please, please say so.
No, I agree. I would think, I would recommend that we do that now.
Well, you know, there are some things that have already run off the rails. But I defer to the attorneys in the room, if we certainly don't want to do anything that jeopardizes our standing. So I guess I'll hold my list for right now, and we'll talk about it in closed session.
Does anyone else have any comments, at least on our side of the table, with regard to this issue? Okay. Anyone on your side?
Anyone on the School Board?
I just wanted to make a process comment, that if items are raised during the closed session that need to be deferred, that we keep a clear list of those, so we can come back to them promptly.
Absolutely.
Okay. It sounds like there's no objection to going into closed session now. My apologies to those of you in the audience, that we are going to go into closed session and receive legal advice. We will be coming out of closed session, but at an undetermined time right now. So thank you very much for your patience. We appreciate you coming out this evening. Sorry for any inconvenience.
I think we're about to be read into closed session, at which time that will be stated. If you listen for the motion, I think you'll hear it. Could someone read us the School Board into closed session, please? Get us into closed meeting.
Would the School Board first, then City Council?
Sure.
Which one is it, Tom?
Bring it up on boy wise.
I move, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board can be in a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, legal matters under Section 2.2-3711A7 in particular, consultation with legal counsel, and receipt of legal advice regarding the issuance of a request for proposal.
Do you have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. See, Mr. Ankuma?
Sorry. Here. My job. Mr. Ankuma. Mr. Castillo.
Hi.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence, yes. Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Webb. I don't think you can vote remotely, but thank you.
You're in listening mode, unfortunately, Mr. Sharp.
So we've got our own motion, upon a motion made by a council member.
Connolly.
Seconded by a council member. Yeah. We have a second. All right. If we don't have a second, the motion's going to fail. We will not be going into closed session, at least City Council won't be.
Second the motion.
Okay. Seconded by Council Member Duncan, and passed by a voice vote of City Council. Council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for consultation with legal counsel and the receipt of legal advice regarding the issuance of requests for proposals for the campus redevelopment project. Council Member Baruch?
Yes.
Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder is absent. Councilmember Zee?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter? Yes. Okay. We're in closed session. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and get started, if we could? Is everybody ready to get, hopefully, do the last leg and push this through?
We're good.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're ready.
Sounds good. Well, I'll tell you, let's go ahead and resume the public portion of our meeting. So we've got, one of our members will be back shortly. I guess at this point, why don't we go ahead and maybe just take comments? I believe there are some comments to the RFP that weren't given before we went into closed session, and I understand there's a desire to, for some members, at least on our side of the table, to comment on some matters. I know you weren't at the prior meetings for your health reasons. Mr. Baruch, do you have some comments you'd like to give?
Yeah, so I have five general comments, and I can kind of point out sort of where they appear also. So the first comment that I have is more general, and it doesn't necessarily need to appear in the document itself, per se. But I think it's really important for us to develop some benchmarks, whether we do it in-house. I know that some work has been done with the Urban Land Institute, specifically on fiscal returns and what's doable based on various FARs. So I think we need to have a benchmark by which we're measuring some of these bids on. In some ways, I'd like to see it in the document, but I know that we're trying to drive towards some timeframes. So that's not doable at minimum. I do think that by the time that we start evaluating, we need to have those independent benchmarks in place. And one of the reasons why I suggest that I would actually like to see that in the document is because I think we are going to get a little bit more sort of not-constrained limitations that are placed. Whereas, once this hits the streets, I think there's going to be some limitations or governors that are going to come in on what we see. But again, at minimum, I do think that we need those benchmarks, working with sort of independent entities, whoever we think can best counsel us on those, of what those benchmarks- benchmarks look like. And I'm not talking about the school program, I'm talking more about the economic program of this and the commercial piece of it. The other piece that I mentioned earlier, I'd like to see discussions with stakeholders such as VDOT and others at the earliest possible opportunity, including before the RFP being finalized. I feel very strongly about that, to bring -- and VDOT is just one entity. There may be others as well that we need to think through of who key stakeholders are that have not been approached yet. And moving more into the actual document itself, the high school, there's, I think there's some additions been made that talk about renovating all or part. Shows up on page three, under 2.3. But then, if you look in the above paragraphs, it talks about replacing the existing George Mason High School and expanding MEH, without any discussion of this concept of renovating all or part. So it's sort of, the document's a little bit inconsistent and disjointed. And then throughout the document, the word "new" is used for describing the high school. So when I read it, the first go-through, I'm like, wait, why aren't we talking about renovation? Because I know that that had been discussed before, and then I ended up having to do like a global search for like renovate, and then I found it in that one place. But I don't, it's just inconsistent. Somebody needs to take a fine pen to it and fix that. And I'm not going to micromanage that, but it's just, it reads very inconsistently right now.
Okay. If I could just respond to that, because I understand what your comment. The concept, the terminology we used, which may be imperfect, but the new high school means whatever that may be, whether it's a complete demolition and rebuild, or a renovation. And replacing the school is intended to mean either demolition and complete rebuild, or a renovation.
Okay. That needs to be moved up somewhere, because it's disjointed the way it is right now.
Any other thoughts on that?
I would, I think you could dispose of the issue by saying in 2.28, replace the existing high school is described in the scope of work below. I mean, I think, I think this is a nit that can be pretty easily fixed.
I think, again, I don't think it's a major issue. I think we're all trying to say the same thing. All I'm saying is, when I read it the first time, I was confused, and I had to read it a few times to get it right. And I think I'm pretty astute and smart, and if I had to read it a couple of times, it ain't great document, in that sense. So, sorry to put it out that way, but that's how I'm going to say it, because I want to move on.
I would actually agree, that I had the same sense when I read through it.
And that's a politically sensitive issue, too. So irregardless of the development community knowing what it is, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about build new versus renovate. So it's a hot-button sensitive issue. So that needs to get fixed. All right, so that's issue one and two. Three, the second question that I had, and again, I don't, my apologies for not being here throughout the whole process, but as far as MEH, has there been any discussion about also having the option of new build? Because right now, we're talking only about renovate.
MEH is expansion.
And that's where the school board felt comfortable, rather than also exploring new build, moving it, et cetera.
Moving the entire school?
Yeah. So that's not, that's not what the thinking is, that it needs to just be renovation, an expansion of that building.
We had some conversation about how it would be great to have the flexibility to have a piece of land in the city where we might locate a middle school so that that could become a high school campus, but after much conversation with a variety of people, no such land was forthcoming. And so I think we've settled, at this point, on keeping the middle school.
Sort of situated where it is.
Situated where it is, with an expansion.
With an expansion.
I mean, the deadweight loss would be substantial as well. I mean, so I think, I think the status quo is where we're at.
Yeah, and that's, I just wanted to raise it, because just kind of moving the building blocks around, could it give other opportunities for economic development, or reconfiguring the high school differently, and repositioning MEH? But it sounds like people have thought about that. Why does staff thought about that, from a planning perspective, too?
Repositioning.
MEH, potentially? Moving it?
We have not unilaterally been thinking about redesigning the location of the facilities up there.
I mean, I think if we started down that road now, I mean, to a certain extent, we'd undo everything that, you know, ULI and RTKL had done, because they assumed it was, it was there, it was in the middle, it was kind of in the way, but there's no way we were ever going to find it financially feasible to tear down a 10-year-old, $35 million dollar building.
Yeah. So. I mean, that's sort of my reaction, that it's, there's a lot of utility left, that it doesn't make financial sense, but I...
Yeah, it's just unfortunate it is where it is, and it's so young.
And then, finally, I, you know, and I don't know how we want to broach this topic with the council, but I had some of the same concerns about how the commercial component of this is getting described. Really, the meat of it sort of appears in a variety of ways. It's sort of a bit of a throwaway, if you will, in the sense that it's going to help fund the school program, and my hope is that it's going to do that plus more on the commercial aspects. And it shows up in a couple different places, and I can kind of, that wordsmithing it, just let both bodies know where I'm seeing further refinement needed. And I think it needs to happen in a couple different places. One is basically upfront in the introduction, where we're bullet pointing what we're looking for. It's under Roman Little High Two, and I think that there needs to be a three, something added about what we're viewing as a need for commercial development happening at the site. It should go up front, in the intro, in my view. And then it should go somewhere on the project overview, where it talks about, you know, the boards wish to permit development up to blank, blank acres for replacement of the high school, expansion of the middle school. Again, I think there needs to be some discussion of commercial development in that paragraph, or in that section.
Development.
Yeah. I mean, it's just talking about redevelopment of, I just think a little bit more is needed there.
Well, that is the overview section, though, right? I mean, it gets, the meat of it is...
Right, but this talks about, the reason for the commercial development is simply to fund the development of the new school, and I think we need to aim higher than that. It's not just about funding the schools, but it's economic development for the betterment of not just the schools, but the city as a whole. And this just seems that we're doing this development on the commercial side, simply for the returns that it's going to have for the school development program.
Okay, so basically, take the language from page four, Section C, where it talks about, you know, other financial benefits to the school and the city, enhancements to the properties surrounding community, that kind of thing.
Yeah, that needs to just be loaded up on the second one.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, I mean, again, for economy and also consistency, it might just be, you know, described, the development of up to 10.38 acres is described in further detail in, you know, Section 2.3C below, so that, I think, that way we'll kind of...
Again, I'm not going to wordsmith it however it works out, but I'm, what I'm saying is, the way that this document reads, and Dave Snyder also picked up on it, it's like we're doing development simply to fund the school program. That's just one piece of it, one piece of it that I support, but it's not all about funding the schools. It's about funding the schools and doing further economic development, for all the reasons that are stated elsewhere.
Yeah, I think, I think we're on the same page there.
So, but optically, it's really important for the community, and for the bidders to know sort of what we're looking at, or the response to this.
I would think that, looking at 2.1, that third paragraph, if we were to just add in the concept of not only, you know, maybe one or two, however order we want to put it in, one is the way it's phrased there, to help fund replacement of the schools, and then two is economic development.
Right.
It's as simple as that, am I capturing the point?
Yeah, and you may also want to somehow refer to it at the end, also at 2.2, because 2.2 starts getting really prospective also. And again, this is how it's showing up repeatedly, and that's why it sort of jumped out at me. It's sort of that last, close to second to last line, where it says, "The school board and city wish to deliver the new and expanded school facilities with minimal or no general tax rate increase to the extent possible." So that's certainly possible, part of it, but we, for all the other reasons that, you know, Justin pointed to in another section, of why we would want to do the economic development. It's just missing from that opening section, until you flip further into the document. So my point is, when I first look at this, all I'm reading is, this is just a way of reducing the tax burden to do the schools, which, again, I support, but that's part of the equation. We need to be doing that, plus more, on the economic development. And it needs to be front-loaded, not back-loaded, which I think is also where Dave Snyder was getting at. So you've got two council members that this is jumping out at. And it's one of style and drafting, not like anything substantively that I think people disagree on, I hope, at least not yet. All right.
I mean, I would suggest as well, as change, I have some notes to the introduction along similar lines, so we can get to that maybe when I make my comments.
And then this sort of gets into, you know, more of, you know, I'm not sure we have full agreement on. I talked a lot about sort of language that was here before. This is somewhere around page four, under the redevelopment of portion of a parcel. So we're starting to talk about economic development in this realm, and we talk about have an appropriate ratio of commercial usage relative to residential usages. So when I looked at the sort of document as a whole, there's basically, the school section is very prescriptive, with sort of square footage, you know, standards, et cetera, metrics, good stuff. I get why it's there. In my view, it's a little bit perhaps too prescriptive, but I'm not going to dive into that. But then, when I look at the economic development side, of sort of what we want and want to see there, it's like crickets. And the only thing that comes close to that is appropriate ratio. Like, I'm sorry, but what the hell does that mean? And how does that sort of provide any guideposts? So I'm left with, we have no internal metrics right now at all that are reliable to measure this against. And two, we throw in fluff language, talking about, you know, appropriate ratios. And, you know, again, I don't want to talk for Dave Snyder, but I picked up the same point. This is, we're going to end up with the same, you know, mixed use that we've seen, which is a glut of, you know, apartments and condos, and maybe some scattered retail on the first floor. So that's certainly not what I'm hoping for or envisioning at the site. And I know at one point, staff had thought about adding language with, you know, and again, not to lock in the city, but start talking about things that we'd want to see there, whether it's office, hotel usages, specifically with ground floor retail. Again, not, not sort of being prescriptive, but at least pointing in the direction that we're going to want to see these types of usages to the extent, you know, feasible and economically viable. But at least guiding developers, that we're not just looking for the same old, same old, if you will, which is, we know can be done easily in the city of Falls Church right now. So, and that's one that I feel pretty strongly about, that we need to provide some guidance without sort of locking us in. And there's got to be a way that we can do that, and I think Wyatt had had some previous language in there in one of the iterations.
Okay, other comments, at least from our side of the table, maybe any side of the table?
One thing that I do think needs to be stated, is that the Urban Land Institute, when they did their assessment, they modeled out that the economic development on 10 acres could pay for, if I recall correctly, and I'm trying to call it up right now, between 60% and 80% of the project.
I think it was on the low end.
It was like, if, let me call up that slide. It was, it was something like that. And we don't have any information, any other studies that indicate it would be higher than that. Now, density is everything, and so, you know, the more density there is, the higher returns there are. But I would just note that.
So, other comments? I have a few comments, but maybe there's others on my side of the table. So I, I'm sorry.
If I could just interrupt, do we have some direction in terms of the last comment about the description of commercial? And maybe this is a point that you're getting to? And elaborating on the appropriateness of the language that relates to commercial versus residential?
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, I will comment on that. I guess I would say I probably would lean more towards what Nader said. There was a prior iteration of this document that I think was closer to what I probably would like to end up with than what I see now, because I don't feel appropriate ratio or whatever the language is really gives much direction at all. And so, why don't I go through my comments, so we can sort of hit that. But I would say, I think we need to refine the definition, at least from my perspective, and I think probably what was in the first iteration of this, as relates to that, at least that subsection that was in the middle of that paragraph, is probably closer to what I would like to end up than what I see now.
Let me comment on that just real briefly. There are two places where it is, and it's in Section C, I'm sorry, 4.2.3, Section C. And so it shows up as, "The city prefers development proposals that, one, feature exemplary design and placemaking, architecture, and amenities, and, two, have an appropriate ratio of commercial uses relative to residential uses." In an earlier iteration, it was, "Have a higher ratio of commercial uses relative to residential uses." I think that actually, in our last discussions on Thursday, I think that reference to a higher ratio relative to residential uses is, works here at this section. Where we changed it was in the evaluation criteria, where if it reads, "A higher ratio of commercial relative to residential uses," that makes it sound like it has to be that way, and that was overly prescriptive. And so I think the intent in our discussion on Thursday was to change it during the evaluation criteria, and then I think there was an interest in trying to make the two mirror each other. But that's the history of how that language has evolved, just with respect to that one clause.
I mean, I'd say, for my druthers, I would prefer the earlier language, or as a preference. But why don't I go through what I've got, and then we can hit there when we get there.
Just on that, I mean, I don't, sort of the ratios, yeah, they're important, but at a conceptual level, they aren't. I mean, I prefer sort of the, making it clear that we'd want to see a higher ratio of commercial, but that's not a key. I mean, appropriate ratio sort of gets at it, but what I'm more interested in is getting away from the type of mixed use, which has been residential with some level of ground floor retail, into incorporating things like a hotel.
And placement.
And office.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd rather see more use-specific language in there, rather than just ratios. Ratios are an important part of that, so ideally, what I'd like to see is higher ratio of, you know, commercial rather than the residential, and then also have language about the type of usage, such as hotel or office. And that's not to exclude, that's just kind of hinting on what we're looking for. Again, it would have to obviously be feasible, but, you know, as, you know, I'm sure that we can work the language out that doesn't say it must be. Sorry.
Okay. So here's a couple of thoughts I have. One, in the introduction, this goes along to some points that have already been made, but I think they bear repeating. It says, "Redevelopment of commercial land adjacent to the schools to generate revenue for the schools and the city to help fund the capital cost of the new and expanded school facilities." I might add something along the lines to the end of that sentence, and spur economic development, create a sense of place, something like that, giving it a broader purpose than, again, just as a stream of revenue, because I think we can do better than that. And so I would use some language along those lines in that place as well. It's the first sentence, the first paragraph you're going to read when you get into this document. In Section 2.1, some of these are kind of nits, but I'm going to give them to you anyway, it talks about showing the location of existing utilities. I wouldn't want to be making a representation as the location of utilities. I wouldn't want to be making a representation as the location of utilities, and so I might want to caveat that and say something like the known location or the known general location of utilities. But I wouldn't want to be telling developers where they're going to find a, you know, 40-inch sewer line, because it may not be where it's supposed to be. And so I wouldn't be wanting to make any sort of representations through this document about that. This is on the last sentence of paragraph 2.1. And the next paragraph, it talks about, "The remaining acreage must be used exclusively for school purposes." I guess I'd want to mirror the language of the covenant. I'm not sure it says school purposes, it may say educational purposes? It says school, not educational?
Where is school?
It actually is, okay. Yeah, I was thinking it was educational, but whatever's in that document should be mirrored, excuse me?
I thought that same thing.
Educational, yeah. So whatever it is, we should just mirror the language, so everybody's on the same sheet of music as to that. The next paragraph talks about, "The city may wish to up to 10.38 acres and use the proceeds for the development to help fund replacement, blah, 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 blah." It seems to me by just saying, "Use the proceeds" kind of implies like a sale, like the cash proceeds. And I know we talk about in other places, tax and the like. I wonder if it'd be better to say, "Use the short and long-term proceeds," to make it clear that it's not just, we want to cash out and maximize our present value, but really the long-term as well. And so I might suggest that before the word proceeds in the third paragraph of section 2.1. It sounds like maybe we've, I had shared Nader's concerns about just using the word "replace" in paragraph 2.2, but also the broader renovation concept. Maybe that point's already been made. 2.2B talks about, "Redevelop 10.3 acres for high-quality commercial uses." Again, I wonder if we might want to add in, "Create a sense of place," sign of some broader language of not just for pure economic reasons, but that we can name a little bit higher than that. Let's see what else I've got here. And this is in page four, section C, I guess it's 2.3C. I was a little confused as to this wording that's been added. It says, sub three says, "Enhancements to the property and surrounding community." I'm not sure really what that means. I think what you mean is encourages redevelopment of surrounding properties, something along those lines. But I think that language could be a little bit more pointed. Do you see where I'm talking about? It says, it just seems to me a little vague. Let's see what else we've got here. We just discussed the appropriate ratio. Again, I'm not sure that's where I would want to end up. I think the prior language is better, but maybe it needs to wordsmith. I mean, to my mind, what we really want to end up there is a sense of place, a great, want to do some placemaking. We want not mixed uses per se and the traditional use, but a mix of uses, so that we have maybe the possibility of hotel, entertainment, retail, possibly institutional uses, but a mix of uses, not just necessarily apartment buildings with ground floor retail of various persuasions, which I think is the common use of the word mixed uses here, at least here in the city. And so I'm a little wary of using the word mixed use, mixed, M.I.X.E.D. uses, and I prefer probably the term mix of uses. But that would be what I would want to see, is a true mix of uses and creating a sense of place, a special sense of place on this fine piece of property. Not sure I have too much more. I've got a few more comments. These are on page six, where they mentioned the bond referendum. I think it would be good to say, instead of just bond referendum, but bond or other referendum, which would allow for the possibility that we could have a referendum on, you know, the project as a whole, whether it's required for bonding purposes or not, but allow for a broader referendum. And that would be in other places. That would be in the paragraph that's on page six, up north, the second paragraph, there's two places where it talks about bond referendum, I might suggest, or other referendum. In the milestone little box there, it also talks about that. The, in section 3.3, it talks about, "Have appointed a team to evaluate." I guess I'm not sure we've already appointed them, and I'm wondering if it should say, "Will appoint a team?" as opposed to "Have appointed a team?"
Yeah, the thought when this was drafted was that by the time this was going to shoot, those teams would have been appointed, but they may not be.
So why don't we just allow for that possibility that the, "Will appoint," you know, "Have" or "Will appoint," something like that? I guess I'm wondering, and I haven't spent a lot of time on this, but this is 4.6E. There's a sentence deleted, "Identify the projected positive social, economic, environmental, blah, 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 blah." I'm just wondering why that came out? Is there any particular reason why that paragraph or that sentence came out? Call that being a comment in any meetings, I'm just curious.
I think, read that sentence again.
It's just the beginning of E, it's been deleted?
The reason is, it is duplicative of some of the provisions in 4.8.
Okay. And I don't have much more, so just bear with me just for a second here more. 5.5A, is this trying to basically get at the, it says, "The reasonableness and anticipated effectiveness of proposer strategies and plans for community information." It seemed to me that from what we've heard, there really wasn't a whole lot the developer is going to do as far as public information, to the extent that is going to occur, that would occur through the city, not necessarily through the developer. Am I mistaken in my understanding of that? Or will the developer themselves, the proposer, be doing community outreach?
Well, I think they potentially could. And that's the intent of this anyway, is see if there is any...
Could you use the microphone, please? Sorry. Yeah, to see if there is any program or strategy that they present, and if there is the reasonableness and effectiveness of that. Now, if that's not something that you all are looking for, then, you know, certainly it ought to come out of the evaluation criteria.
I think we all want as much public participation as possible. I'm just, it's sort of seeming a little bit at odds with some of the things we've heard about the requirements to keep a lot of information confidential. And so I was just curious as to why that was put in. I guess you're just saying to the maximum extent permitted, or?
Well, yeah, what we're talking about is their plans. Once the, you know, if they are selected and they're under agreement, then what their strategies would be in dealing with the community to inform and keep the community apprised of as the project is moving forward.
But this says, "The city and school board will evaluate, blah, 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 blah." So that applies before they're selected, right? I mean, otherwise we wouldn't be evaluating something.
Right, we're evaluating the strategies and plans that they have presented.
For public engagement after they're selected?
Right.
Okay. I don't know if that needs to be clarified a little bit, it certainly wasn't apparent to me when I read that, what that was kind of getting at.
Yeah, that can be clarified.
Okay. And then I think we're getting near the end of the line for me. The last paragraph before section C, it's on the top of page 17, it says, "As to promote commercial activity in the area." I guess I would say promote commercial activity in the adjacent areas of the city would sort of be my concern, is promoting it in the city, not necessarily in neighboring jurisdictions or neighboring places.
Is it part of the idea to try to promote commercial activity maybe in adjacent properties?
Well, it is. I guess I was thinking it would be, first of all, it just says the area, it doesn't say adjacent. And so I think adding the word adjacent would be appropriate or nearby or something like that. My focus would be on the city, not necessarily Fairfax County or some other jurisdiction, but that was the point. So I think that is what I've got. So are there others that have comments?
Just if you want to think for a minute or two longer about whether you have anything else, just wanted to concur with Mr. Buruk's remark earlier about adjacent jurisdictions and VDOT. In our earlier discussions, language on page 12, under a new number K, says that we're going to identify and describe any owners or tenants adjacent to the property, which is, I think, an attempt, as I understand it, to speak to that. I'm just looking at the language that Mr. Charter just pointed out on page 16, which talks about including with adjacent property owners and neighboring jurisdictions. That is the same kind of language that conveys a desire that we, early on, encourage the proposers to, well, in fact, even earlier than that, that we, as a city, reach out to the county and to VDOT. I remember when I voted for the water sale agreement, I thought this land is going to be tremendously valuable if we are able to get into it. But it is a little bit of a landlocked kind of situation on Route 7, so we need to be very sure very early that we are going to be able to, you know, put curb cuts and traffic signals and so forth in order to maximize the potential of our property. And I think the language that we have now conveys that, but that's just something I did want to have publicly on the record. And also in that same vein, so I believe we've agreed on page three and on page four, where we talk about the size of the buildings in question, the language will be, "The expansion is expected to accommodate additional 400 students for Mary Ellen Henderson, and is expected to accommodate 1,500 students for George Mason High School." Language that's just a little more flexible to the proposers than the previous, now replaced language, which says, "Must accommodate 1,500." In other words, the number could be somewhat different from 1,500 if the proposer had a plan that seemed reasonable for making that the thing that we should do. I think that's all I had.
Sure. Ms. Conley?
This is the first time that I saw June 1st, 2019, as the delivery date. Did I miss that? When we first started talking about it, it was a June, July 1st, 2018 delivery date. When did that change?
Yeah, that changed probably, gosh, a couple of weeks ago. And that, yeah.
I missed it completely.
And school board did talk about it quite a bit, but it also has to do with, on the advice of our owner's rep, with Arcadis, we actually have a very, very detailed schedule that, you know, outlines every little step of the way. And we were advised that we were, that the timeline needed to be loosened up in order to give the opportunity for the very best product to come back, because if we were time crunching it where it was too compact, we were less likely to get a design that would be more complex, because we were saying it had to be done by '18. So we've given them that extra year flexibility.
Yeah, this works. To your point on point 3.3, page six, when talking about the evaluation team, there's language here that says, "Technical, financial, legal and other subject matter advisors will provide assistance." Is that understood to mean these would be outside of, I don't know what you call, outside of third party? Or is that understood as in, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the intent.
Okay.
That's correct.
Anybody, Mr. Buruk?
I had just one minor nit on page four, under C, "Redevelop a portion of the parcel." So this is on little i, i, tax yield to the city and other financial benefit to the school board and the city. Not sure exactly what that means, and I don't think technically it's correct, because all money goes to the city and then to the school board. So I think it should just end with tax yield to the city and other financial benefits to the city. But doesn't that address the fact that we may end up selling our land, and that would possibly be a financial benefit to the school board as opposed to the city? I mean, ideally, we don't want to, but... Is that what it's getting at? I think so.
That was the intent of the language, yes.
Okay. Yeah, and we do make it clear later on, we'd rather not, but...
So wait, are you still?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Does that mean that at some point, land could be sold and the money would not go to the city, it would go to the school board directly? Is that the intent?
Yeah, somebody should look at that question. I don't, I think it's getting pretty late, but my, I think that's a question you guys might want to talk to Carol about, about if that's the intent, that it would be a sale, given that the school owns some of that property, like, how does that work? Does it come to the general fund, or does it go to the schools, and how does that play out? It just kind of jumped out at me, because I never understood the school board being a taxing authority or et cetera. But maybe they can hold money once they sell property, I don't know.
All right, other comments?
If there are none, I think that the paragraph C that we were just focusing on, I think I've got a good feel for all the other comments that were made. I think a couple of the ones that were made with respect to this paragraph, I still have some confusion in terms of what the desire is of the bodies to reflect in this. We just talked about the financial benefits to the school board piece, as to whether we want that in or out. One way to handle that is to just refer to the tax yield to the city and eliminate other reference, the rest of that. But what I would like to do is take these items one at a time, because I think this is certainly important, and this is a place where we want to get the words correct, and go through each of these, because I don't think with the information that we've got, I'm confident that working with the staff, we can come back with something that is reflective of what the members are expecting accurately, without going through this process again.
So are you talking about writing this paragraph C or rewriting this paragraph C now? Is that what you're proposing?
It sounds like on at least three of the items that I heard, there is some opinions on language change, and I'm not sure that I can reflect those accurately in a way that will meet all of the expectations here.
So let me ask you this, I mean, it sounds like you've got some drafting to do. Are you prepared or desirous of doing it right now? Or would you like us to maybe talk about something else and you go, come back in 15 minutes? Or do you feel like you want to do it right now?
Well, I'd like to talk about a couple of them in particular.
Okay.
The one that I just mentioned, in terms of the other financial benefits to the school board and the city, I think we talked about consulting with Carol on that, which, that's probably a takeaway for me. The next one is what is now Romanet 3, "Enhancements to the property and the surrounding community." I think I understood, Mr. Mayor, you were feeling that that was vaguely stated.
Yeah.
Would you like to see that expanded or removed?
Well, I don't think, I don't think either. I think maybe just refined. At least from my perspective, I thought that was intending to say something along the lines of encourage redevelopment or economic development of neighboring properties or adjacent properties in the city, or something along those lines. I thought that was the intent of this, but maybe it's something different than that. But to me, I wasn't sure what was meant by that, and so that's why I raised it. And I guess maybe I would ask who the drafter of this, what the intent was of this. Was that you, Wyatt, or was it?
So for which section specifically?
Romanet 3 on section...
Provide high-quality effective transportation improvements?
No, no.
No, we're on 2.3C.
Well, you know, the enhancements to, the enhancements to the property and surrounding community is actually old language, and so out of economy, we kept it in there because it was in the original. It used to read, Romanet 1, "The value of the property and enhancement to the surrounding community." And so kept that in there. I think that in terms of communicating broadly of what we're trying to accomplish, we're not, it's not just about fiscals, it's also about creating a good product that people want to come to, and it's going to be an enhancement to the community. I think that is part of the commentary that has been part of this process from the beginning. But I would also note that that language was in the original draft.
So I mean, the next paragraph, the next sub-paragraph says, "Feature exemplary design and placemaking, architecture and amenities." I guess I just was curious as to what that means, what the prior sub-paragraph means in contrast to that paragraph.
I think they're complementary to each other. What Romanet 1 has, though, is that phrase of placemaking, which we heard from a lot of council members wanting to have in it, and a reference to architecture and a reference to amenities. And amenities is writ large. I mean, amenities can be good street furniture. Amenities can also mean great commercial uses. It can also include public space that would be a public amenity in the development. Those are ideas that we're trying to capture with that phrasing.
I'm not so concerned about that. I guess the enhancements to the property and surrounding community is what I'm confused about. about. And so I guess I'm just trying to get at what that is supposed to mean.
Romanet 3 is just broader and more general.
But, but I do think, in light of everything else, does enhancements to the property really add anything? I think, I think we've killed it a couple of ways.
Okay. Well, it does mean, though, then, that we're trying to maximize the financial value and the tax yield. And then there's no reference to other sort of bigger things we're trying to accomplish. And so as referenced earlier, back in section 1.0, you did want to keep the focus on, this isn't just about dollars. And so I think Romanet 3 accomplishes that.
I mean, I wonder if you should just take in the little Romanet 1 or whatever it is about, and that'd be number little 3, which is placemaking, creating a sense of place, et cetera. It's hard, frankly, to try to draft here at this time, but I think that's a critical element to this redevelopment of the commercial portion, that it's not just another apartment building, because that may maximize our financial yield. It may be if you look at our fiscal model, putting up a whole bunch of apartments would maximize our financial return. But I think the city hopes and wants more than that, and we can do more than that. And we can create a special sense of place. When you have 10 acres next to a metro station, it's a pretty good opportunity. And so I think we want to convey that to the realm of developers out there, that we want something, you know, kind of above and beyond the usual, and that we're trying to create a special place here and would like a mix of uses. And so anyway, I guess, I'm not sure of the right wording to put in there, but I wonder if the, the enhancements to the property and surrounding community might not come out, and the placemaking might go in its place or something like that. But to me, that's an important concept, that this is a special piece of property, maybe the biggest thing the city's ever done as far as development and undertaking. So I guess that's what I was getting at with...
I like that it said surrounding community because it gives a nod to the neighbors.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I kind of like it exactly the way it's written, Ashley.
Okay.
I think with respect to, I think all the pieces are here, it just needs to be bridged a little better. With respect to enhancements to the property and surrounding community, what follows really illustrates what that means. So you might just say, you know, enhancements to the property and the surrounding community, which, you know, which shall include or could include, and then you go into the description. So I think that might be a good bridge.
Yeah, there's, there's two different sentences here. The first one is sort of, here's what you must do, that that's the scope of work. The second sentence, as pointed out, the city prefers, and then the rest of it is really expressing preferences as opposed to requirements.
I guess I would have a preference to see placemaking as a requirement, not necessarily as a preference. I mean, I think it's important, at least to me, that this be a special piece of property and that we really work hard to make it, make it that way.
Could I ask a question about, with respect to the yield to the city and other financial benefits language? That does somewhat jar with at the bottom of page 4. It says there's a preference to retain fee simple ownership. So I think there could be some dissonance there. I don't know if the suggestion was already made to just stop at other financial benefits, but I think that, given the preference about retaining fee simple ownership, would probably suffice and be a little more consistent.
I'm sorry. I'm not following the...
Well, we say, if there's talk about other financial benefits, we also have discussion...
Well, I will say this. I think the other financial benefits, I think I may have had a hand in drafting that, although actually I see that's in the original also. What I envisioned with that was that there could be, I would say this, I certainly did not think that the sale of property was a financial benefit for the school board. And because the sale, or at least the property, is so intrinsic to the financing of the high school, and that debt's going to be carried on the city's side. I've just, I've never envisioned that the, the sale of the land would be a benefit directly to the school board in that technical sense. What I thought that phrase meant was, there could be other benefits, there could be a remodeling of a baseball field or something like that, which is in the school's operating budget and helps them out. That's kind of what I was thinking.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That's, that's fine to leave it then.
On page 4, can I ask a question about where you go in the last paragraph? The city prefers, the city prefers a, you know, two structures such as...
Such as a long-term ground lease. Isn't that a little leading? Because you then go on to say, "But we'll consider other land transaction structures." I'm not sure how many land transaction structures there are, but should you just open it out or should you sort of lead them down the long-term ground lease?
Well, I think that's what this does, and this is an important point. So this expresses a preference for a, a long-term land lease. It doesn't say what the term would be over fee simple sale. I mean, that's what the other structures would be unless people come with other creative ideas. But those are the two options. And so we're stating a preference for a long-term lease.
Right, without ruling out the other.
That's right.
Yeah.
And, that's right.
Okay, to, to try to conclude the discussion about the enhancements to the property and surrounding community, if we include both that and the idea of creation of a special sense of place, would that accomplish what we're looking for?
Probably. I mean, I guess I would just say, I'd like to see it. You know, it's kind of hard to, that's, that's a concept that I think is an important thing for us to consider and to put out there. And if we don't, we may not get what I think a lot of us would like to see, which would be maybe some exciting entertainment possibly for the city, you know, some gathering place for the community, but something more than the ordinary development. And it's a special opportunity, having a lot of land, you can do some things you can't do on a small site. And when you've got a lot of land next to a metro station, you've got even more possibility. So I think, to me, that's something we want to let the development community know that we're interested in doing. And I think the high-quality developers will understand that right away, intrinsically. So anyway, I'm not sure how to put the words together at this point.
Well, do you want that in the, in the first sentence that's declarative as opposed to optional? That's the real question.
I mean, I think so. To me, it is something that would be, you want that. It's not something you'd like, but you want that. And frankly, it's a, it's not, it's a nebulous definition anyway. I mean, somebody's sense of place is, you know, something different than yours is. So I mean, it's not as prescriptive as you might think, because even if you say it, everyone's got their own idea of what a sense of place is. So I think that does give flexibility to developers as well who might respond to that.
Yeah, I mean, why don't we just combine them and say, you know, 3 would be enhancements to the property and surrounding community that feature exemplary design and placemaking architecture and amenities? I mean, it's all there.
I think, I guess I would say even beyond just placemaking architecture, but just placemaking in general. You know, not just great architecture, which I hope we'll see, but I hope we'll see the uses that make it a great place, too. Public spaces, you know, retail, things like that, that would be, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, I'm not sure of the right words to put together at this hour, but I'm, I'm confident you could do that. You can come up with something.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll combine both of those concepts, I think. And the last question I had was, there was an earlier comment about using examples of hotel and office space, not exclusive, not exclusive list. Do we, do we want to do that? Or do we want to stick with just the general description?
I think my preference is to stick to generalities. I think the kind of developers who want to try...
Yeah, just keep it, keep it...
Read the code.
Keep it broad.
Read our intent.
Okay.
I mean, that goes to, to your point. I mean, I, all of us, I think, have struggled with, do we do illustrations? Do we change preferences to demands? Do we give them a balance, things that they can balance in their equation? And I think that, you know, we all kind of land on this, is the prospective proposers will not make a big difference in, when they read this, pursue this between what we prefer and what we will evaluate them on. So these preferences get turned into evaluation characteristics later on. So I think sometimes, for me, in this RFP, that I completely agree with you, the, you know, a sense of great place, but you can just overdo it, so.
Okay.
Like you, I think the, I think our drafters could call some good language.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see some, some language on this for Monday, because I may propose it. There's at least two members, myself and I think Dave Snyder, that feel strongly about it. So I may offer it up as a motion. And if it fails, it fails, but I feel pretty strongly. This is one of the bright lines, where I would want to see some, some not prescriptive language in there, but some hinting. And if it fails, it fails, and we move on.
Could we not do this on Monday?
Pardon?
Could we not do this on, is there a way we can move this up in, in a manner that will allow us to, to get this squared away? I mean...
Well, I don't know how you guys were planning on authorizing it, right? You just said that you made, do you guys care?
Well, I, I think, I, I think to the extent, this is a significant piece of the puzzle. I would like to see that we get there sooner rather than later, and, you know, Monday is on the later side.
All I can say is, you've got two members that, you know, I certainly feel strongly about it. I'd like to see some of the language. If it's not there, I may or may not vote in favor of this thing at the end of the day. And I don't know where Dave Snyder is going to be at this. So that's just where I come out on it. I said that, you know, in the beginning, that there was few items that I cared passionately about. This point, if we don't get some guiding language, I do not want this location to turn out like the rest of the Falls Church, where it's apartments, we don't get any true commercial in there, like a hotel link or like an office, based on what I know with other development that's coming forward. If we can't get it here, we're in deep trouble. And if we're not willing to sort of start signaling that, when the heck are we going to do it in Falls Church? And I get that we want to open it up, and I get that we want to be flexible, but I think we can draft language that says, "This is what we're aspiring towards if the marketplace will allow for it." If none of the proposals come forward that have that, then we'll evaluate it at that point. But to say we're not even going to sort of go down that road doesn't make any sense, especially when we're being as prescriptive as we're being on the school side of things, which I understand and support. But to say sort of, we're not going to sort of lean in at all on the type of commercial that we want to see, I think is a mistake.
Didn't we, I thought we had agreed that we were going to substitute out this appropriate uses, appropriate ratios, and put in the prior language, or at least that's what I thought we were discussing. You know, the language from earlier, is that what you're talking about, Nathan?
I, I thought so. I mean, sort of what I'd like to have seen in there, and again, I didn't have strong feelings about the ratio piece of it, but at least guiding, guiding the types of development we'd like to see without sort of boxing us in.
I agree with Nina. It's important.
And, and I mean, we're sort of guiding it by saying relative, I mean, this, this sends a message. We're saying commercial uses relative to residential. So we're sort of already guiding it there. And to say, "We're going to back away and not say hotel or office," come on! Then we're inviting the negative, which is bring on the residential. I mean, there's consequences of it, because we're already saying the word residential. I mean, if we don't want to say residential, and that gets knocked out throughout this document, and it's totally, fully open, I get it. But by having residential, unless we're guiding it.
Can we have an appendix that lists the commercial things we prefer? And then it's not officially in the RFP, but it's listed as an appendix? Or is that just a whole new thing?
I think an appendix is, is part of the RFP.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
So I think the que, but go ahead, Mr. Snyder. I mean, I guess the question becomes, Mr. Baruch, as to your point, which specific phrase or clause are you referring to? Is there one in particular, so we can try to...
So again, I'd like to see two clauses. The main clause that I'd like to see in there is a description of the usages that we're looking for without being prescriptive. And I think there may be some language, Wyatt, that you may have, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it's probably, I think there's two things. One is, in the earlier draft, there was a reference to, "The city prefers development proposals that have a higher ratio of commercial uses relative to residential uses." So I think that's what the mayor's referring to. You're referring to a preferred list of uses, and that's not terribly complicated. It's, I think we all know what they are. We prefer hotel uses, retail, theater, arts...
Entertainment.
Restaurant, entertainment. Those are all preferred uses. And I mean, that's probably, if we were to say, "These are things that we like," that's probably the list. If we get more complicated than that, then we would need more time on it.
Yeah, and I'm not proposing that we get more complicated on it. It would be basically those two sentences put in.
Well, I would suggest with that, that we go back to the original language and say, "Have a higher ratio of commercial uses," and then maybe even just do a parenthetical there that says, "E.G., office, office space, hotel, entertainment, restaurants, et cetera." And then pick back up with relative to residential uses.
Well, if you're going to completely open up, then I'm going to insist on language that speaks to open spaces, civic, civic and other kinds of amenities, design features that address pedestrian and bicycles. I mean, just how far down this list do you want to go? If you're throwing hotels, let's throw in the rest of it.
And that is, that is the main reason we didn't go down this path, because once you do start going down that path, where do you stop?
But my point is, we've already gone down that road.
And all of that, I'm going to insist on, you know, high percentage of lead gold and platinum buildings and, and making them rooftops amenable for future solar. Happy to do all that.
Is there a way we can ground this in the outcomes that we want as opposed to the inputs that will give it to us? Because I think, I think we all...
I, I hear Dan on this, but, but we've already opened the door by saying, by talking about mixed use rather than mixes of uses. And we've already opened the door by talking about residential usage. That, that door's already swung open. So Dan, you want to, if you want to draw it out towards sort of the absurdity of drawing that analogy out, but I think that there are ways of having clarity without sort of stretching it all the way out. And, you know, we could sort of draw it out to say, okay, we want to get prescriptive about, you know, sidewalk with, which we all sort of have strong feelings about. So that's not what I'm talking about. So let's not sort of draw out what I'm proposing to the absurdity, because that's not what I'm talking about again. I'm talking about, let's...
Well, I don't think it's absurd.
Let me finish. Provide at least some level of guidance of what we're talking about when it talks about So that, that's where I come out on it.
Well, I can't say agree with the rendition of, of commercial, as we all know here. And I think the sophisticated developer proposer will say, "Look, you know, Arlington's tallest building has been vacant for three years." Arlington's tallest office building, and now, even, even now, they're having difficulties finding anyone to take it over. And further, we're turning office buildings into schools, into residential. They're going to say, "This city doesn't know what it's doing." And that, I think, is going to decrease the competition.
So how about just half of what we just discussed, which is the preference for commercial over residential? Is there an agreement on that or consensus on that, getting away from the second portion?
No.
Okay.
Well, again, I think, you know, the, we'll, we'll know it when we see it. The problem is, we haven't seen it. And again, I think it's better to say, "Here's the outcome we'd like. We'd like the place, we'd like the feel, we'd like the rich uses, and the fact that it doesn't turn into a ghost town at 5:00." And then let's see what come, what they come up with. And if we don't like it, we can say, "Well, let's change this." But I think there's more risk being too prescriptive upfront. Now, we can see what we'll get, and let's talk about what we want. And again, I think, I think we all know there's something out there that's really appealing, but I don't trust myself, certainly, to, to be able to articulate, you know, you need this, this, and this, and then you're golden. So I think if we can root ourselves more in that outcome, we'll be better off with, with what we get in terms of offerings.
Yeah, and this is going to be my last word on this, but I think, again, you know, if this document didn't have sort of a description about residential usage or commercial, and that door was closed, I wouldn't be the one opening it. When I, when I read this document, this is saying, "Bring on the mixed use," which is the residential with ground floor retail that we've been seeing. And that's what I'm reacting to. So that door is swung open. I'm trying to sort of, trying to contain that a little bit and provide some visioning. So the other strategy is just take out all the references and leave it totally open. But to think that this document doesn't say, "Bring on what we've been getting in Falls Church," is just not accurate, because that's what this document is saying. So either we take the references out or we provide clarity, because that, that door in this document's already swung open, in my view.
Let's take out residential. High ratio of commercial and similar uses. Just strike out residential.
I'm here for some others. Ms. Oliver?
I just want to go back to what I think are the two really key ideas that I have taken away from tonight. And that is that I am not, I am still not sure that the PPEA process is a good fit for this project at this time. And I think that an aspect... And I think that an aspect of this that we all need to consider is the timing. On that side of the table, we have people that want this agreed tonight so they can vote on it tomorrow. And on this side of the table, we have people who are still not happy and are asking for another week. And you all don't think there's a time to put a week in there. We added a whole year to the schedule, and we still have to have a decision by Tuesday night when we don't have consensus. So I'm really concerned about the process at this time, particularly given the fact that we are going into an election season, which will put some pressure on our ability to maintain the standards of this process, and particularly given the condition of the current office market. Danzy referred to the tallest building in Arlington. There was also a story today in the Washington Post about similar issues with office vacancies in Maryland. I mean, this is a region-wide issue, and it may be the case that to get the best benefit from this land, we can't really go forward right now based on the discussion we just had about what we want to specify and what we want to see. And I just want to let everybody know that my biggest concern right now is that I do not think this is necessarily something we should be proceeding with right now. And it's going to affect the way that I vote if we're voting.
But again, I think, I mean, when you talk about hotels and office space, for example, I think of Uber and the 30-story building in Roslyn. We don't know. I think there's a mix out there. And again, the RFP process could generate something that works, could generate something that doesn't work. We won't know until we put it out and see what comes back. We have indications that there's interest out there and talent that can generate something. It may be that we decide it isn't the right time, but I don't think there's any harm in proceeding to see what we get.
I think my point is that if we have to proceed by next Monday, then there may be harm, because we may not have really evaluated whether this is the right timing on the process. If we don't have a week to try to, you know, polish up the language, that speaks to a bigger issue within this group.
I agree a little bit with what Ms. Oliver is saying, because I guess my issue right now is the divide that is ever building here, because I ultimately thought we all had the same amount of time to have a lot of these conversations and be at a much closer point of moving forward with us tomorrow. Maybe some slight tweaking over the next few days, and then the council passing on Monday. But sitting here right now, I really don't see where we are close to that yet either, because there needs more of the council side. Some very fundamental things out there that heels are being dug in a little bit on and wanting something. So for us to get to a point of one side, us going forward with something, the other side, because there are such big hurdles for them to jump right now before they pass, I don't... I'm just having a very difficult time right now to seeing where we are to do this, because I really thought walking in here tonight, we would be a little bit closer than we are right now, and I really don't see that. And it's just because of more so not necessarily our side, because I think we've had a lot of the big issues that we had problems with. It sounds like there are still some pretty tough, big roads on the council side to get to. And as I said before, if we're talking about passing something tomorrow, and then there are going to be big fundamental changes come later, I'm not comfortable for us to go one side. And then next week, it's something completely different from what we just voted on on tomorrow night, if we get to that point. But that's just to let you know where I am, you know, at this late hour. But it just, when we seem to get a little bit closer, we fall back a little bit further away from it.
Other thoughts here? Ms. Carney?
I think in our school board discussions, we thought we'd be a little further along, and we would vote tomorrow night for Tony to dot some i's and cross some t's. And I don't think we're there. I think we've made great progress. I think we're pretty close. I don't know why we would have to have our meeting vote on it tomorrow night. I don't know why we couldn't wait until after our city council has had this week to sort things out, and we've seen another draft of it, and they've had their conversation on Monday, and we can come back next Tuesday, which is a, you know, normal night that we meet on Tuesdays, and take our vote then. I mean...
One thing that I would just note is that I wouldn't... It's midnight. I wouldn't exaggerate the differences. If there were real big arguments about whether we should sell any land to do to finance the construction of high school, that'd be a pretty big problem. What we're talking about is ratios of commercial uses, possibly making the school program bigger, a little bit bigger. I mean, these are actually kind of minor things. I would just probably suggest that as a city, we have never been able to grapple with commercial ratios in an abstract manner. The only way we've ever been able to make those decisions is when an application is before us. Because these are hard things to wrestle with. If I were to try to pin you all down on what that ratio would be and make you vote on it, it would be a very difficult thing to do. So I would suggest it's midnight, and maybe what we've done is maybe talked too much about the document, and people are worn out, rather than take too much disheartening that there are major differences.
Well, I agree that I don't think that we're in as much danger as it might seem. But I do think it would be useful to know what our path forward is for the next seven days. You know, I think this language in Section C, I think we can get there. I think it's a matter, though, that starting sooner rather than later, relying on, you know, some process to keep this going forward would be helpful, because if, God forbid, this would be a situation that it's midnight next week at this time, then I think that would be problematic. But I agree with Mr. Shields. I think we're almost there. I think we just have to get across the finish line. I'm hopeful that we can keep this process going.
If we were to hold off till next week, could this RFP still be issued on the 30th?
Yes. You know, you could vote on it the same day or vote on it the day before, and it'd still be issued on the 30th. Yeah. So, I mean, what I'm hearing is that there are some differences of opinion on some language, and that expanded to some larger concerns about the process as a whole. But I haven't heard of the RFP itself. We've walked through a number of changes, which frankly, I think are pretty minimal and not particularly meaningful as far as the intent of this RFP. So I think, you know, we can get... I mean, as an example, we could turn this around.
Did he just diss us?
I think our attorney just dissed you in a big way.
Counsel, I would submit that if this were my day job, I'd be ready to have lunch.
Our former counsel just...
Well...
What point taken.
The... Yeah, okay.
Are we supposed to step in here and bail you out? What are we doing?
No, no. I'll continue down this path.
How do we get that shovel?
I do think, I mean, the things that we have been talking about in terms of the language, you know, we can turn around in a day or two and get you a new draft of that, which I think is what everybody is looking for. I think the most difficult paragraph is Paragraph C. You know, there are differences of opinion on how specific that should be, but I think that, you know, we're talking about frankly, a few words included or not included in that. So the larger issue is the larger issue in terms of, you know, the process and that sort of thing. I think staying on the schedule, I wouldn't think that tomorrow night... That's probably aggressive in terms of having something that people have had a chance to look at and vote on. But I think, you know, perhaps later this week, and certainly by, I guess, Thursday would be the date we would post something, is certainly realistic.
I think, you know, make it so. Let's get that draft turned, so.
Mr. Baruch?
And my ask would be, at least for the city council meeting, with the next meeting, we not go into closed session first, that we dive into the open session?
Okay.
As a way to proceed.
All right. Any other comments, or should we wind this meeting down?
Could I just ask?
Sure.
The comments that were made earlier about the public's access to the process and certain individuals who are on appointed bodies, I think it was said that we might have some further consideration and maybe some language. Is that what we took away from that part of our discussion? I'm just asking if we're going to take a little extra time. Is that something we might see next week before we vote?
So what I would anticipate is, when the RFP goes out, there will be included instructions with respect to public comment, and we can have that text prepared to be reviewed in conjunction with the revised RFP. And I would anticipate that that would call for a public comment period of a certain period of time with, you know, comments to be submitted in writing. Separate and apart from the question process that we've got set up, that proposers would be submitting questions specifically on, you know, process and aspects of the RFP and the project itself.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else? We actually, the city council has further closed sessions tonight before we... We've got miles to go before we sleep. So is there anything else jointly we need to be talking about? All right. Thank you all for coming out. Why don't we take a five-minute break on the council side, and we'll go back into closed session on our closed session items?
We have an open session? What's the open? I thought that was closed session. All right. Can we make that about a 30-second item? Why don't we take a five-minute break anyway? Do you mind if we just take a minute or two break, let everybody clear out of here?
All right. Why don't we go and get started with the rest of our meeting here? Cindy, make it short and sweet.
All right, Counsel. Thank you for hanging in there for one more item. This item will be before you at council meeting on Monday with the request to advertise and solicit and invite bids for the provision of electric utility in the city, which is required per state code. Then we do the required advertisements and bring it back for council action on August 10th, and we'll receive any and all bids for the provision of electric, open it. If there's more than one, we would, and they're complex, request council to defer it while staff review it. I anticipate, based on other localities experience, we'll just have one bid submitted, and then we could take action on the August 10th meeting. I'll be glad to answer any questions. The staff report includes the schedule. I did want to highlight just a few key things in this franchise agreement on line 62. It is different than other localities. One of the big highlights is improved undergrounding, improved notification. It's a 30-year term, and one of the biggest things I wanted to highlight is this is a non-exclusive franchise agreement, which Dominion has not done and offered in any other locality. Also, they have offered an alternative. Normally, they would just do undergrounding so many circuit feet per year. They'd cover a portion. We'd cover the bigger chunk of it. They have offered an equivalent where they would give us the cash value, and they would do a turnkey. We would not get as much circuit feet if we didn't have grant money or local money to supplement, but in exchange, we would actually get a project done. And so those are some key highlights that are different for the City of Falls Church's proposed terms that we would solicit bids on. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I would ask that we move it forward next week.
Any questions? Okay.
I have expectations to balance that they would turn a key underground is very important.
Okay. Any questions?
Is that accumulative? If we don't use it one year, can we... Will it be cumulative?
Yeah, we do have some terms when we can carry it forward or advance it if they would agree to it.
All right. Any other questions?
No, it looks like a good job. Really nice job.
Okay. Great. Anything else anyone would like to talk about?
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thanks for sticking with us here.
Thank you. So this is my...
I think Mayor Beth's got a proposal.
No, I just want to propose, rather than have a closed session tonight, I have the materials we were going to discuss in closed session. I will share them with all members of council electronically with the request that you respond to me by Thursday of this week. Thursday. Thursday! I'm looking at everyone here. I just looked down there with Thursday. If you respond to me by Thursday, I can pull this all together so that we can indeed vote on it by Monday. I'll try to... Okay. All right.
What we're talking about? So are we doing the Cox agreement next Monday, Ms. Mester?
Yes. Cox agreement will be for second reading on Monday, and Dominion would be first reading for advertisements.
Okay. Did everybody get made happy?
Everybody was made happy.
Excellent.
You'll see two whereas's in the Cox agreement that we all mutually agreed to.
Great.
And the Budget Finance Committee meeting, half of the Budget Finance Committee meeting had a nice meeting with Richard LaConde last week about bond issues for the coming year. And he answered a lot of our questions, which I'm happy to answer you. I believe that's on the agenda for Monday also. And he was going to share the information with... The 10th. It's on the agenda for the 10th, so we can discuss further if necessary.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anything else to be discussed tonight? Any comments, questions, anything else? Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right.